Good afternoon. It's 4 o'clock on September 20th, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. Roll call, please.
Fox, Krieger?
Yes.
Begic, Koonin?
Here.
Radke?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Eric?
Here. We motion to excuse Commissioner Begic at this time and Commissioner Fox.
So move.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Please stand for the invocation followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Board, we ask that you bless this session of the Board of Commissioners this day and that you lead and guide this board in the decisions made so that all citizens in this community will benefit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the bosom of liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda will be the minutes of 8:16:22.
So move.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, citizen input. If anyone would like to speak before the commission, now would be the time to do it. Please state your name, sir. You look familiar.
Mike Rovard, Bay County Drain Commissioner. I'm just here to notify the Board that we do have an obstruction in one of the drains that we're working on. I've been working with the landowner to have it removed. He gave him 30 days. He did not do it. According to the drain code, I'm going to notify the commissioners, give him another five days, then dig it out and put in a special assessment on his property. And that's what I'm here for, just to notify the Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the Board? Seeing no one, we'll move on to petitions and communications. First up will be the Department on Aging and the 911 Directive on the Implementation of a Program for Caregivers and Residents dealing with dementia or Alzheimer's patients.
Good afternoon. I'm Beth Eric, Bay County Department on Aging Director, Julie from ISD. And Brent Rubus was supposed to be here to talk about this.
Easy.
There we go. I did pass out the presentation, but it's also up on the Board. I'm going to give you a little scenario. You have a loved one who was just diagnosed with Alzheimer's, and you still have to work because, you know, bills need to be made. And you go home, and they're not there. You don't know where they went. They don't have any other health issues. They still can drive. They can still walk away. What do we do? Okay? What do we do? So, this is where that MyID program that is on your screen there comes into play. So, Bay County Department on Aging and 911 Information Systems were collaborating together to bring this program to our Bay County residents 60 years and better. Jessica and I went to a conference held in Calhoun County about these bands that I'm wearing, and that I gave you one of, that I will want back because they're not our bands, they're theirs. Miles for Memories is what theirs is called. It's a home help program in Calhoun County that started to create a greater peace of mind for the caregiver. It was designed to help the person with dementia return home safely, less anxiety for the caregiver, less issues for the caregiver. So, how is this going to work? So, the information is going to be taken by Department on Aging. We have set up some sites and some times that we're going to collect this information. And each one of these bands on the back has an ID number and a PIN number. So, it will be assigned to that person, and as much personal information they want to put in, or as little, we can do that. What we really need is a caregiver or an emergency contact. So, we will put all that information in. When one of our emergency personnel or a citizen sees this band, can flip it over, call 911 and say, "I have a MyID band." They will have the website up, be able to punch in the ID number, the PIN number, and figure out who that caregiver is for that person. Taking the time to register is just, you know, giving us one more tool to helping us bring people back home without, like, a trip to the emergency room, because a lot of people will take them to the emergency room and say, "I don't know who they are. I don't know what the problem is." You know, "Help." And, you know, so this is just one more way. So, when a loved one is registered with MyID program through Department on Aging, they can be identified through either scanning, there's a QR code on the back of those, there's the calling in the ID number to 911, or they can actually go on the website themselves and put that all in. 911 dispatch is going to make protocol for our emergency personnel, that when they get that, they just call 911, and we'll put it in the system. ISD has worked already to get the website uploaded safely, securely, to 911's system. And Calhoun County, this is the big thing, they gave out 1,500 bands, 135 people successfully returned, and one had gone to Indiana. He took off, drove, and Indiana State Police pulled him over for erratic driving, saw this, called it, took care of it, and he got home safely. So, the best thing about this is there's no cost to this program for anybody 60 years and better. There are requirements for our program through the caregiver. Somebody has to be 60, and somebody has to be a Bay County resident. During the month of October, we're going to be at the sites. I have a press release attached to this that Jim has approved already, that we're going to go and start registering people and get these bands set up so that we're ready to go. So, you know, watch our wonderful times, watch the websites, everything, because that information is going to start rolling out here very, very soon. So, we need to thank Calhoun County Consolidated Dispatch Authority for even coming up with this and sharing it with everybody. They didn't have to share it, it's, you know, their program, but they were like, "This is a great program. Let's get it out to every county we can." We do thank our Bay County Executive, Jim Barsha, because he always supports everything that we do, and our Bay County Board of Commissioners, especially Commissioner Ed Keating, Commissioner Johnson, who I kind of sprung this on to see what, as caregivers, you would think about this kind of program. And you can see, working together for the residents of Bay County, Bay County Department on Aging, Bay County, and 911. You know, we all work together to make it. Oops.
Questions?
Questions.
Just have a statement, Mr. Chairman, and want to thank her for her leadership and her continually proactive work on behalf of the department as its director and mobilizing a tremendous staff to provide great services to our 16 better residents of Bay County. And thank you, Beth, for always being on the cutting edge in terms of what's happening throughout Michigan around the country, to find ways that we can better serve our residents who have paid their dues through their lifetime, paying taxes and being outstanding citizens. And these new bracelets will help protect, protect people who are vulnerable, who may lose their way and due to memory issues or other issues, not be able to get reconnected with their loved ones.
And our bands are really, I gave you guys a picture of what our band is going to look like. It's black instead of gray. It's black on the outside, gray on the inside. At one side says Department on Aging, the other side says 911 Central Dispatch. So, we do have, so that people understand, "Oh, I know what that band is. I know what that is for." So, that is, and they are coming. We're working with a company called MyID out of there, and we are doing, this is getting paid for through the ARPA funds that we received from Region 7. Yep. So, it's not even, it's no, like I said, no cost. Yep.
You know, I continually, when I go out, I talked to a lot of people, and I always talk about Department on Aging, and they say, "We do a lot more than serve meals," you know, and, you know, I mean, they always says, "Oh, they serve all these great lunches," you know, and that's true. But I said, "There's so many other," this department has evolved so much in the last few years since you've been in charge of it, you know, it's, you've come a long way, and you keep, and like Mr. Barsha said, you're just, you're innovative and you keep finding new things to do. And it's great to team up with 911, because they think all they do is answer the phone and say, "We need help." And there's other things they do also, you know, I mean, Bay County really does a lot of good things for all the people who live here. And I think sometimes we underappreciate what everybody does, you know, because everybody works really hard.
Our ISD too.
And they're always thinking.
Yeah, our ISD made sure that, you know, we're secure, you know, nobody can hack us on that kind of stuff or get any information out. So, you know, they make sure that we're, I can show you, I promised I would be short, but I can show you really quickly on the website how this works and how it looks, so that you can see that. So, this is what the login, this is what the login that 911 can see. This is my band. They gave us a band each to play with so that we could, you know, and the other thing, there's no, it's waterproof, silicone, stainless steel, no charging, nothing. So... What ends up happening with this is it would pull up every, there we go.
There you go.
There we go.
Perfect.
So, when it is, it pulls up who I am, things about me that I put in there, like I'm allergic to penicillin, where I live, what my birthdate is, you know, I have lathered hair, it'd be nice, like, what's up with, no, there's no weight. Yeah. But you can sit there, and it says, "Notify emergency contact." If you click on that, you can put in a quick message, you can put a callback number if they want to, and you hit send. So, I'm not going to put a callback message, because I want Jessica to show you. So, it says, "My emergency contact has now been notified." And a lot of the people who are going to be getting this call from 911 will know it's not, you know, that it's about this band, because we haven't registered, and if 911's calling, okay, it's my loved one. Can you chill up?
So, I just received a text as best caregiver, because you guys know I take care of her the best that I can, obviously. And it does say, "I just received a general text message," and it says, "Elizabeth Eric is in an emergency," and it has a Google link that I can click to get a relative location of where she is.
20, within 20 hours, okay. So, we can see, you can either Google thing or a callback number, and they can call the person. They can call back 911 and say, "Hey, I'm over there. I'll be right there to pick up my loved one."
It's going to be great.
It is.
It's going to be a great program.
Again, it's just one more tool to the trade that we have.
And Beth?
Yes.
I remember when we had conversations, you had talked about a similar product that costs a whole lot.
So, they do have, MyID does have, like, the one that looks like an Apple Watch, but it's $120 with a $30 charge every month through Verizon, because it's a Now Time GPS. Nobody has money for that. I won't have money to do that through ARPA. Again, these bands are costing between $100 and $12, you know, a band, and we're getting them out there to the people. This works just as well.
I think people are going to like these because there's no, actually, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I think they're going to like it because there is, you don't have to charge them, just, you have to wear it. That's what I think.
And then to that, I know, but I want to talk to my wife about, you know, she works with, she works with special needs, because at ISD, sometimes they have similar issues with sensory. And you had said that of the people that had it in Calhoun County delivery.
Two. Two people. One had an allergic reaction to the, actually, the silicone, which we can't do anything about, and then the other one just wouldn't leave it on. What's nice about these bands too is if you are, your loved one has dementia and you have your own health issues, we can issue both a band. So, if you are in a, God forbid, car accident, and they can't say who you are or what's going on, they're going to see this band, flip it over, and activate that system. That's it.
Thank you. Support. You're good. Moving on, under B. No, we have no motion to receive her.
I do. I support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Next, under B. City of Bay City Application for Industrials Facilities Tax Exemption District and Certificate.
So move. Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Glenn Rowley, Request Appointment to the Bay County Land Bank Authority Township Representative. It's an October Board appoint.
I'll move to receive. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brian Benchley, Request for Appointment to the Bay County Department of Health and Human Services Board. Motion to receive.
There you go. You can move it. I'll move. Support and receive. There you go. Thank you. It's nice to share.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, from the Ways and Means Committee, Commissioner Radke, you get the honors today.
All right. Resolution Number 2022-179, The Adoption of the Amended Viva Trust. I would like to move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next up, Resolution Number 2022-180, The 2022 to 2023 Childcare Fund Annual Plan and Budget. I would like to move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2022-181, The Memorandum of Understanding for Day Treatment Program with Handy Middle School. I would like to move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next up, Number 2022-182, Out-of-State Travel for National Association of Pre-Trial Services Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, for Dujana Solomon of Community Corrections Manager.
Support.
I would like to move.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution Number 2022-183, BCTV Sponsorship Agreement for 2022 through 2025. I would like to move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
After that, Resolution Number 2022-184, The Budget Adjustment for Food Supplies for the Civic Arena, which would be an increased, or I'm sorry, with increased revenue. I would like to move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2022-185, Temporary Funding for Intrado Phone System Upgrade for 911 Central Dispatch. I would like to move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2022-186, L-4029, 2022, The Tax Rate Request. I would like to move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2022-187, Application for Waiver of County Certification Level for the Equalization Director. I would like to move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2022-188, Federal Transportation Planning Funds and Asset Management Funds in accordance with FY 2023 Unified Work Program. I would like to move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving into Resolution Number 2022-189, Health Insurance Rates Along With the Budget Adjustment. I would like to move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2022-190, Payables. I would like to move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Koonin.
Oh, thanks. If I can go back to the last one, I was thinking, you know, with the rates going up on the healthcare, and this might be across the board industry, you know, COVID must have had some effect on the increase. Do we, anybody, you know, any of our, you know, Brown and Brown, or whoever does our assists us with healthcare, is that an issue, or was that an issue, why these costs have gone up?
I don't know that they can identify if that's exactly the issue, but we do receive, or we did back when it was at the height of it, we were receiving quarterly reports based on COVID care. So, people were hospitalized due to COVID, the vaccination costs and things of that nature. So, we did know how much specific COVID-related injuries were costing the county. I think in situations where you just see sort of a widespread increase, it's difficult to point it directly to COVID, because COVID can lead to a lot of different health issues that may have been underlying issues or not. But I don't know that this is directly linked to COVID. Certainly, there has been an increase in healthcare costs, but one could argue that there would have been a higher increase without, you know, the vaccination costs or things of that nature.
Has there been any information across the board nationally where healthcare costs increase were attributed to COVID? There must be a study somewhere.
I can find out. I can ask Brown and Brown and see if they have anything.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know.
Sure.
Where were we at? Which one were we at?
Resolution Number 2022-191, Agreement with the Essexville Public Safety. I would like to move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next up, Resolution Number 2022-192, The I-3 Image Soft Agreement. I would like to move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, Resolution Number 2022-193, The Budget Stabilization Fund. I would like to move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yes.
All done?
All set.
Perfect. Thank you. And next, we're going to move on to Personnel and Human Services. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, sir. We'll begin with Resolution Number 2022-194, The Rescission of Resolution 2022-166, ARPA Funding for New Hope Bay. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2022-195, Reallocation of ARPA Funding for the Bay Area Community Foundation. Move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2022-196, Bay Veterans Foundation Workshop Project ARPA Funding. I'll move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions relative to this, and I apologize. I listened to the meeting last week, but was not able to ask at the time. I thought we had allocated all available ARPA funding prior to this with the Civic Arena and possibly the Bangor Monitor in Auburn.
What the funding was, there was 1.437 million at the time, unallocated.
That were kind of reserved, I mean, that we were toying with. And this wasn't part of that conversation, so I was surprised.
As far as we know, there was 1.437 million unallocated.
Okay. And then, how much money is needed to open the building? Do we know? Because this is something different than what was originally brought forward, and it's for programming. But what I heard was they were going to use volunteers to do programs. So, what is this money going to be used for? Because it can't open, and we don't know how much is available to open.
Keith was here last week. He could have answered that. I can't answer. They can't, they can't answer it. They can't open without the money. We know that for sure.
They have to open without this money, because they can't use this money to open a building.
Well, they can use, if they have fund balance, to open a building, and this can be used for whatever purpose.
But we don't know that, right? That was never communicated, correct?
He was here last, he was here last week, right? I don't know.
They gave all the details that there were to be given last week.
And I didn't hear any of that. And that is a big concern that I have, that we have ARPA money, that we sort of had a couple of projects lined up for, and then we don't know how this will be used, and it can't be used to open the building. So, what's needed to open, to provide these service services to our senior, or to our vets. And I'm, I don't feel like we have enough. That's my concern.
Yeah, just to Commissioner Fox's question, the Board determined to reduce the ARPA funding allocated to the community center from 1.4, excuse me, Civic Arena, to, from 1.4 million to 1.2 million. So, 200,000 that would have been spent on capital needs at the Civic Arena, primarily a huge compressor that's about a million dollars or so. But I think the Board determined that the Bay Veterans Foundation made a solid case and reduced the amount allocated to Civic Arena by 200,000.
Weren't all of those funds needed for the Civic Arena? So, then will we be dipping into our fund balance to fill the gap?
So, because of the massiveness of the project, a major player in the compressor system told us to budget about 1.3 million. And because this is a project two years out probably, but before we're required to spend, you know, before 2026, we're required to spend the ARPA dollars, but we have to plan it so far out, I wanted to give us, when I asked for those 1.4 and some change, I wanted to give us enough wiggle room, because we've seen prices and capital improvements go up. So, we're just, if you decide to approve the memo that I have under, I think it's old business or new business or whatever, the bottom of the agenda, we're just going to have to bid it out and make it work at 1.2 and some change, as opposed to 1.4. So, the number we got from Simfo was a budget number, so I think we'll still be okay if we can, if we can go with that number, right, for 1.2.
Okay. Yes, one more.
A little off the point, but I was at the, I was on the River Walk with my little dog early in the morning this week, and the RUP project on the community center is going very well. And I was pleased to see it was a local company, Brown Roofing, that's doing that, undertaking a massive reconstruction of the roof on the community center. Just to let the Board know.
Commissioner Fox, Commissioner Koonin, go ahead.
Those weren't ARPA dollars, were they?
No, that was a planned capital, from our capital plan.
Last year's budget. Thank you.
Commissioner Fox, you know, like, when it gets down to voting, when we do get to the Civic Arena, you could always add amendment to add 200,000 on, because everyone wanted to use ARPA money for the Veterans Foundation, you could add on 200,000 out of general fund to that community center project.
I understand that. I'm also a process and a roles person, and we set up a process, and what I read in the resolution was basically, we weren't going to get the money we wanted, so we're going to go about it a different way. And I want to make it very clear, I absolutely support the vets, but I'm struggling with this process for this particular.
I know.
So...
Okay. Anyone else? Nowhere else. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. Resolution Number 2022-197, Creation of Civilian Deputy Recruit Positions. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2022-198, Renewal of Agreement for Medical Director Services. From the Health Department, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Koonin.
So, last week I had asked, there we go. Hello, Joe.
Hello.
Do you have some numbers for me?
I do. So, in 2020, the year of, the first year of the pandemic, Dr. Bender grossed approximately $250,000. He worked on average anywhere from 36.87 hours per week for the entire year. Last week, I said he worked 60 to 80 hours on average. The funds would be, or that amount, that total would be much, much higher if he did. I mixed up my hours with his hours. In 2021, Dr. Bender earned 232 hours. This is year two of the pandemic. So, at this time, you know, not only were we seeing big increases in the numbers of people that were affected, but we also, the vaccine rollout at the time, he averaged 34.35 hours.
So, that was 21 or?
That's 21. Currently this year, through this current week, he's earned $102,000, which is on par with what the budgeted amount is going to be. Now, probably your next question is going to be, or I anticipate that, did general fund support this? No, actually, the bulk, the overwhelming majority of the funds in 2020 and 2021 were actually paid with special grant funding for COVID. So, it's... grant funding for COVID. So it's, it was a, you know, we're seeing a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic, and these are once-in-a-lifetime costs that go along with that.
I really appreciate those numbers. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All set? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-199, authorization for appraisals and build-out analysis for proposed community health and human services center location site. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-200, budget adjustment for Pin County Park for tree removal. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Krieger?
So we talked about the loss of these trees and about looking at what trees we would replant with. Do we know what disease took these trees out?
Yes and no. The answer to that is yes and no. Laura's office had her staff come out and they took samples of the trees and they sent them down to MSU Extension. There was a very scientific name of the certain fungus that was in the trees, but the report said that that was only a portion of the reason that these oak trees died. It probably opened them up to other factors potentially, but it wasn't the sole, this fungus or whatever scientific thing that MSU decided. It wasn't the sole reason that those trees died. So yes and no.
So are we doing anything to be proactive on the remaining trees that are there?
Well, we, Laura's office treats them with gypsy moth and for all of the invasive species that her office works. So we actually have saved a lot of trees in that public space. I think that oak tree death is very specific and unique. Some of the trees, not all of them, but some of the trees probably died because when the water was so high, all those root bases sat in the water for two years. That's a portion of it, too.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
So they do a lot of work. Laura's office does a lot of work in the park on saving our trees.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-201, allocation of 4.2 million in ARPA funding for the use of revenue recovery.
So.
I move this resolution.
I'll support it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-202, reclassification of public health officer/repost deputy public health officer position. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-203, vacancies at 911 Central Dispatch, Juvenile Home and Health Department. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-204, registered nurse, page needham, hire at a three-year rate. I move this resolution.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
I think I did.
I think we're done.
Commissioner Fox, you want to do the next thing here? The Board of Commissioners?
Sure. Resolution number 2022-205, the Bay County Sports Hall of Fame. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-206, reports of the county executive for the month of August. I move that resolution.
Support.
Okay. This discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-207, the confirmation of appointment of Justin Peters to the Midstate Health Network Substance Use Disorder Oversight Board Policy. Holy smokes, for a three-year term from September of 2023 to August 31st of 2025. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Wow. And resolution number 2022-208, the resolution for grant funding for the fiscal year 2022 Homeland Security Grant Program. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
My word, sir.
Ta-da. Your work is done. Thank you. Reports of county officials and departments. Mr. County Executive?
Just sort of one announcement, and that is especially for those of you who are interested in the Saginaw Bay and the Saginaw River watershed, the semi-annual State of the Bay Conference will be held Thursday beginning at 8:00 a.m. at the Doubletree Hotel. And I'm honored to offer welcome remarks and introduce the keynote speaker. And I want to acknowledge Laura Ogar, who will be moderator of several of the sessions as well as the speaker, and is, her dedication and passion for water quality and the watershed and the Saginaw Bay is well-known. And I know she's going to be a key featured speaker at the conference. I don't know if she wants to say anything, but I understand there's already 177 folks registered, so it should be a good, good event.
I'll be there.
I think she wants to say a couple of words.
Yes. He gave me that opportunity. Thank you. Yes, it is this Thursday. We are sponsors, County Executive Office. So Bay County, we are sponsors. It's a great opportunity for to hear about the numerous partners that are working on the bay from Huron Pines to the north. We've got Shioasi Refuge. We've got the Saginaw River Parks, Chippewa Nature Center in Midland as well, Community Foundation, which is also a partner. But listening to the different work for stream restoration, dam removal, educational partnerships, report card, and, you know, fisheries as well. So it's a great opportunity to hear it in one place at the Doubletree on Thursday. Thank you.
Good job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go on to unfinished business. Resolution number 2022-139, the Civic Arena Capital Project Allocation of ARPA Funding. Does anybody want to move that?
Oh, I'll move the resolution.
Support. Discussion. Commissioner Coonan?
Yeah. It says Civic Arena Capital Projects. What's the other projects?
It does say capital projects, but the compressor system, the whole massive system would, would take up the whole, the whole dollar now, the 1.2 million. Now, there is obviously some connectivity to that, right? That it's a big system, so it would just be the one.
All right. And it's a big piece of equipment. I guess I don't have enough information on it as to what the equipment is, the age of it, the lifespan of it, what type of maintenance we've done over the years. How many years do this, and it can't be, you know, maybe the company can come in and give us some information that would help me better understand if it needs to be done now or can be done in a couple of years from now.
So, may I?
Yes.
We have a Simcoe compressor. Simcoe is the leader in keeping ice cold. They're a Canadian company. They are expected to last 30 years. At this point, we're trudging into year 26, and we were told about two years ago that we have just a handful of years left. We should probably plan for five years. That was two years ago. Because this is such a massive system, we have to plan this project probably two years out because we would shut down the ice for probably about six weeks, six, seven weeks. And so we want to do that at our slowest point of the summer, right? So we have to plan this process out. There is preventative maintenance done on this piece of equipment all the time. We actually bring Simcoe in every year to do a top end on either, there's actually two compressor, two actual in the, in the system because we have two sheets of ice. And so we're trying to be proactive because this is an ammonia system. If we were to have a leak, an ammonia leak, it would obviously be not only dangerous but detrimental to area, to civic operations, all of those kinds of things. So this is definitely a planned capital improvement that we are going to need to do probably in about the next three years, and we would like to plan it hopefully about two years out, so we don't have any massive issues for that.
Go ahead.
I think it's great. You can still plan whether we allocate these dollars for it or we use some of these dollars for the projects that were brought to us from Auburn, Monitor, and.
Bangor.
Bangor, removal of that train bridge. I would like to get some information on those three projects, and maybe you can give them to us the next time we have a meeting, and we can see how much those cost of that 1.2 million, and whatever the balance would be allocated for that project, and we've got fund balance. That, you know, these, these improvements are capital. They usually go through the budget process through capital. I'm not saying it doesn't need to be done, but we got different ways we can use that money. Maybe that money can be better spent helping those folks that did come here looking for some support from us with the ARPA dollars on those three projects. So if we could refer this back and still go through with the planning, it's going to have to be done, as it necessarily, you know, and, and then just give us the information on what the cost of those three projects would be, and, and if we can do those, we'll vote on that if there's support, and the rest would go to the capital project, and then it goes through the budget process, and it's approved that way.
How much do we spend annually on maintenance on this thing?
Inspection.
Inspection, maintenance, roughly.
I'd have to pull that information for you because it all depends on what Steve has to replace and how much oil is burned and all of that kind of stuff. Now, I think we've, if I, I hate to gas in an open meeting, but I know we spend quite a few thousands of dollars, like eight, nine, right, to bring Simcoe in to do the top end every year. So it's multiple thousands of dollars. But we spend, I mean, that, that machine is, is maintained to a T. I mean, it's, it's our whole business. Keeping ice cold is our whole business, right? So it is maintained very, very well.
And then maybe you can provide that information as well. So I'd like to make a motion that we get some additional information on the cost of that and the length, how long it's been in operation, what the lifespan is projected to be, all that good information that we can see and understand. We know that it's going to have to be replaced in the next three to five years. We understand that. Go through your process, and let's see what we have in the cost of those three projects that those folks came here and asked us for some money are, and if we can do that. And then whatever dollars are left, if there are any dollars left, go to that project, and the rest will come from fund balance or we'd look at it. We know it's got to be done. But, so my motion is to refer this back to additional information and, and see what we have on those three, three projects and provide us more information, and then we can go from there. There's no real hurry. You're going to do your, you're going to do your, your planning. It's going to get done. But we've got a couple of years to spend this ARPA money, so. And we do have some folks out there that need it. That Cocon River Train Bridge, that's dangerous. And I don't know who owns that, who's responsible for that, but somebody gets hurt out there, and we would, in a heck of a hurry, you know, maybe lose a whole lot of money. So I'm, so I'm going to refer it, get additional information. I'll support it.
You know, I also want to say, I think, I think that what you're doing is the right thing. We talked about this project starting last January. We can nickel and dime this, the rest of that ARPA money away and it'll disappear, you know. And we, these other projects, we already turned down once. I don't think you can wait on something like this. If you wait till it breaks down in the little winter, you have no ice, then the whole arena shuts down, you know, all your hockey leagues and everything. I think that what you're doing is, you know, you're going to get, you can get a number, and you can have money set aside right now. And I think it's, it's the best opportunity for us to use this money the way it was. We took, like you said, we already took, you know, scraped off 200,000 off the original amount that we put out there for this already, and I don't think we need to take any more. Let's keep, let's keep that number where we're at. Get your bids, and we'll know, and we'll know. Maybe you got enough, but if you get bids now, at least we'll find out where we're at. And we're not going to, we're not going to know unless we get the bid. Commissioner Coonan?
The project's not going to be stopped. Kristin, you're going to do your due diligence. The process is not going to be stopped. But we cannot help townships with general fund dollars. But we can help townships with ARPA dollars. And there's, we've got 19 million in fund balance. The Ice Arena is, you know, is part of the general fund. If we didn't have these ARPA dollars, you would be coming to us through the budget process saying, we need to replace this information. And I would still like to see a quote from somebody, or have those folks come in and give us some information. That's a lot of money, just to say, we need this and we're going to do it. I, you know, I think we need more information. The money's there, whether you take it from this pocket or this pocket. It's there. It's going to be done. I'm just saying that if we want to help somebody who came here early on asking for our help with the ARPA dollars, that's the only way we can do it.
But let's take 1.4 million from general fund right now, and we'll skip the ARPA dollars and put it back, and you can give it away, we can give it away wherever we want. Maybe that's what we should do. Commissioner Fox?
Question. Shauna, I know I hear we have 17 million, we have 19 million, but we really don't. Because we have money, I think the two of you could answer this, that we have reserved earmarked for contracts and future spending. So a huge portion of that money is already allocated, correct?
Not allocated toward wages.
Well, I might be using the wrong words.
Well, but if you look at what our current budget is for wages, yes, we will be spending at a rate that's unsustainable after three years.
So of that 19, 17 million that's referred to, how much is really non-restricted available, however you want to say, at ballparking?
I can provide you more detailed information.
Would that be, would that be the same dollars that were just allocated, the 4.32 that we've allocated for revenue loss?
It was intended to help maintain.
So instead of taking 10 million, that we could have taken the revenue loss, it's 4.32 that we just allocated to set aside for revenue loss.
4.2, yes.
So that's, that's what that is.
To help offer.
And then right now, with the allocation towards the Veterans Center, we have 1.237 and then 37 dollars and fifty-some-odd cents, something like that.
Yes.
One man, 200,000.
It's unallocated.
At this, at this time?
Yes.
Can I ask, because, so I'm trying to find the timeline in my head. The Civic Arena is 25 years old. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. So you're chugging through to year 26.
Mm-hmm.
The company that put this in and told you, you've basically got 30 years, right? Of which they told you really you probably got three years.
So the mechanic back there says you have 30 years. Our mechanic.
When you buy it?
When you buy it, in 1997, right? The mechanic that comes and worked from Canada, works at Simcoe about two years ago, told us we should plan for only having five years left. So we've got three years at this point, based on his wealth of knowledge, right? So, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
It's like a 30-year shingle.
Yeah.
There is a 30-year.
I bought a house in Essexville, Hampton Township almost 20 years ago, and it had a 30-year roof on it, and it was replaced after we had only been there for about 10 years.
There you go.
So, but the new one's a little bit better than the last 30-year shingle. But, so I understand that. And so you basically are looking at, even though you've got, essentially, you don't really have three years. You really have somewhere around two because you wanted to try to get it replaced during the summertime when, when there's low usage, is that correct?
Absolutely. We have, we have to plan this far enough out that we get the company to come in for the replacement during our slowest time. We, we can't do this replacement during high hockey season.
And, and next question. So then how easily can one even be procured?
Oh, you go through the, we'll go through the purchasing policy, the bid process. There's maybe three, maybe three companies that can do this, possibly more, but three that I know of. The big player is. The big player is Simcoe, that's what we have right now. They're the one who gave us our budget number because it's kind of like a Zamboni. They're just like the gold standard.
Right. So how accessible are they? If you needed one right now, how easily could you get it?
Well, it has to be built, like, right? So you can't just order it off the shelf. Yeah.
Then how long do they give you an estimate as to how long it would take? Any idea?
I haven't asked that question because I want to plan it so far out that we have a good time for... You know, I didn't say, "If I have to get this tomorrow, how quickly can you get that?" I haven't asked that.
I'm just curious because I know that, you know, some of the places that... Right now, Hampton Township's still waiting for their F-150s that they ordered back in January.
Well, to your point, we placed an order for a Zamboni in August of last year, I believe. Remember, we approved it knowing that it would take many, many months to get here. I contacted Zamboni today and we're still pushed out till November. So we are, I mean, it's been 13, 14 months now or something like that. I mean, that's how long these things are taking, right? So the forward planning is so...
Commissioner Coonan?
The Zamboni works, though, right? The old one?
I usually...
So I'm not saying... I'm not saying you don't do your due diligence and plan it. All I'm saying is that there's different ways that it can be funded. And if it wasn't for the ARPA dollars, it would be funded through fund balance. And $19 million is all... It's not... There's no money held for anything in there. It's 19 million. Some of it, we may have to have a commission vote to use it. But the $19 million is money in the bank. So it's not... I don't want to get that mixed up with contract negotiations or anything like that, so...
I just want to say, it was a previous, you know, Board of Commissioners that committed to the Civic Arena. We've always known that ice skating is a very expensive recreational pursuit and a million dollars for a compressor. And I know Kristin is passionate and as well as the staff. And we have a segment of the population that loves to skate. But it is a very expensive proposition. When you look at the cost of the Civic Arena, it was about $20 million in bond payments for a facility that would be lucky to be able to sell for a million dollars to a private sector entity. So it's up to the board, but in terms of how much you want to keep investing, it's never broken even since it opened stores. However, with Kristin's leadership and the staff, we've shrunk that annual deficit down from a few hundred thousand dollars annually to maybe, what, 30, 40,000 this year?
Yes, four years, it's been around $50,000 mark.
$50,000 around every year. The cost of electricity, too, as that goes... I mean, the just utility bills are very expensive on that facility. That's why, unless counties have a huge foundation revenue stream, for example, Midland, very few counties own skating rinks and civic arenas. Something for you guys to decide when you want to make those investments. But it was a long-term kind of commitment. It's going to be around for a long time. It's very expensive.
I think we're going to make the investment and you're going to do your due diligence. I've always been a supporter of the ice arena. Even when we were... Taxpayers are subsidizing it at half a million dollars a year. Now we're only subsidizing it at $100,000 a year. But it's important. It's a part of the community so that when people come to look to live in this community, we've got something. Some things need to be subsidized in the ice arena. It's run great. You do a great job. All I'm saying is that we've got ARPA dollars. Those ARPA dollars can only be used for certain things. And I'm just saying, if you come back next month or next week or whenever we meet again and give us some information and we can revisit this on the distribution of the $1.4 million or $1.2 million and look at what those three projects cost and if we so choose to go that way, balance would go towards that and then the rest would come from... In the capital, what would normally happen without these ARPA dollars, capital expenditures?
You know, those folks in those other townships, they had ARPA dollars, too, and they chose to use them on something else. They didn't choose it... They didn't put in a drain here or a seawall here. They used it on something else. And now they want to come back and ask us to use our ARPA dollars to help them when they picked a different project to invest their money in. And that's fine, but this is our project. This is, you know, this is something, like you just said, it's something that the whole community uses. So it's not just... It's not Portsmouth, it's not Bangor, it's Franklinus, it's all the townships, all the people use it. And the people come in from out of town, they use it, too. And it's a part of the community. We, you know, you... I don't know when, you know, I wasn't around when it was... I remember when it was built, but, you know, it's become more and more a focal point in our community. It's something that the people like and I think you've got to maintain it. It's just like your house. If you don't maintain your house, like you said, you know, sometimes it's going to last 20 years and it'll last 10. And then, but if it goes, if something like this goes down in the middle of winter, you know, you're screwed. You got no... Then you have no revenue. Then you can't get it fixed. You can't do anything. So it's better to plan ahead. Commissioner Fox?
It's a domino effect, too. If it goes down in the middle of winter and they go somewhere else, what are your odds of getting them back once you're up and running however many, six months a year down the road? So there's that to think about, too.
I think it was moved and supported, but we're not talking about not funding it. It's going to happen.
But let's fund it now. And let's, why wait? Why do we have to wait?
Well, I move that attorney supported it to bring back additional information.
Which order these go in? The original motion or the second motion?
Motion to refer always is a precedent motion over the original motion. So you vote on this motion and then if it fails, you go back to the original motion.
Okay. All in favor of the motion to refer?
But you can't do a roll call.
Why? Okay. We can do a roll call.
Why make a motion to refer?
We can do a roll call.
Okay. Krieger?
Yes.
Bickett?
Coonan?
Yes.
Radke?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Fox?
No.
Herrick?
No.
Okay, so we have two yays, four nays.
Okay. Now the original motion to allocate the funds. Let's go.
Bickett?
Coonan?
No.
Radke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Krieger?
No.
Herrick?
Yes.
Okay, so we have four yays, two nays.
Thank you. On to new business. Is there any new business to vote aboard? Miscellaneous. Commissioner Krieger?
Thank you. Back on January 18th, as a board, we passed a motion to pay for the food licenses for our local restaurants. And we're going to need to make some adjustments to our general fund as needed. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget adjustments for Shauna to be able to take care of business.
Support.
What? I...
January 18th, motion 24 was made to waive the food services.
Yeah, I remember that part.
Okay. There was no budget adjustment needed. There was no budget adjustment included in the motion. So I need that.
Okay. That's fine. How much is the budget adjustment, do we know?
$148,000.
Oh, that's... We did do the whole thing. Okay. Okay. Now we've got a motion, we've got support, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
My little one, too.
Announcements. Oh, another announcement.
Yes, I'll be brief. Thank you. You recently, in this meeting, you passed the funding for the transportation planning authorizations for our metropolitan planning organization, which is held through the Bay County Transportation Planning Program. I just wanted to announce that through the Michigan Transportation Planning Association, which is a singular association of all metropolitan planners in the state of Michigan, they did recognize our staff here in Bay County as exceptional throughout the state. I have Dominic Pavone here. He's the program manager for our transportation planning program. He was awarded the Junior Planner of the Year through the Michigan Transportation Planning Association. And James DeWort, his assistant, has also was recognized. His work was recognized. This was a big deal.
Why don't they come up here so they can really be recognized, you know? So people can see them on TV then.
The junior planner is actually for any planner with less than 10 years' experience. Dominic actually had less than a year's of experience and he kind of stepped in. These transportation plans are long-term planning documents, you can imagine.[1714.04]